We'll call to order the meeting of the Pittsman County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting Tuesday, December 18th, 2018, 7:00 PM in the Pittsman County General District Courtroom, here on our Shields Courthouse Edition, 11 Banks Street, Chatham, Virginia, 24531. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barber.
Here.
Mr. Blackstock.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Farmer.
Here.
Dr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Scares.
Here.
Mr. Warren.
Here. I would ask that you observe a moment of silence with me, please. Thank you. Please stand with your full members.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there items to be added to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to add the following items to tonight's business meeting agenda. Matters from the work session, under one dilapidated structure recommendations as item 14A.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Barber. Any discussion on the motion? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the agenda as presented with the addition.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on the motion? Please cast your votes. Please record the vote. Carries unanimous. We're down to consent agenda. Please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on the motion? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimous. We do have, out of one of those presentations, we have Tunstall High School Theater Group, state champions, Ms. Christine Williams and Tunstall High School Theater Group. I think they're here tonight, so if you all would come forward, please, and I'll ask the board to come down with me. Please come up. Please come up. This is actually, Mr. Barber is the Tunstall District Representative, but he's having a little bit of eye trouble tonight, so he passed it off to me, so I'm going to give it for the first time, so bear with me. Pittsman County Board Supervisors, Resolution 2018-12-02, Virginia. At the Pittsman County Board Supervisors Business Meeting on Tuesday, December 18th, 2018, the following resolution was adopted honoring Tunstall High School Theater Group. Whereas, on December 3rd, 2018, Tunstall High School students traveled to, on each other, High School in Charlottesville for the State Theater Festival, where they won the Class III Virginia High School League State Championship Title for their performance of "This Side of Heaven." And whereas, the state championship is the first that Tunstall High School has received in theater, and whereas, after competing in the regional competition on October 27th of 2018 in Christiansburg, Virginia, the theater group qualified for the state championship. And whereas, under the direction of Christine Williams, theater art teacher at Tunstall High School, the theater group consisted of Mary Catherine Jones, Cameron Bell, Carter Mills, Kimberly Shogan, and Gavin Braun. And whereas, since the show were mobile, each school had to load in their seats and prompt and wait for their set up. They had a set up time of five minutes, 35 minutes of show runtime, and five minutes to clear the states of sets and props. And whereas, they competed alongside William Monroe High School of Standardville, Virginia, Brookfield High School from Lynchburg, Virginia, and U Kent High School from U Kent, Virginia, and were able to win the state championship title. Now, therefore being resolved, that the Pittsman County Board Supervisors does hereby express their deepest congratulations and admiration to the Tunstall High School School Theater Group for its accomplishments at the state competition, and be it furthermore resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Tunstall High School, given under my hand this 18th day of December 2018. Robert D. Wong, Chairman, Pittsman County Board Supervisors, congratulate them.
(Applause). Other than, I just want to thank everybody who is supporting us, and in the county especially, we need more arts. Obviously, these young people are very capable, going against schools with far less, we can do far more, and I just want everyone to continue to support the arts in our county as these students need it. They need it very desperately.
Thank you so much. Another state championship. Could you picture Matt? Thank you. Send it to us so we can put it on our Facebook and, um, sure we can...
Y'all squeeze in tape. They don't need us in half, boys.
(Laughter).
(Inaudible).
Okay. We're down, I was looking for you, Matt. We are down to Presentations, IDA Economic Development Announcement, Mr. Matt Rowe.
Good evening, gentlemen. Just wanted to update the board on action taken this evening by the IDA. It's action that really, in my opinion, is transformative as far as for the region because it's a sign of the activity in our area, the momentum in the area, and it's also a sign that is being recognized by the private sector as far as development-wise. This evening, the IDA signed a purchase and sale agreement with Realty Link Development Company out of Greenville, South Carolina, to purchase 51 acres formerly known as a Ringgold East Pad site, 28 acres of which are graded pad, for $1 million. The property was assessed at a little under $650,000, so paid more than assessed value, with the stipulation that the company develop at least a 250,000 square foot facility that can be marketed by the county. It may not be recognized by citizens, but we've been slowly and quietly, sometimes with announcements, sometimes not with announcements at the request of companies, but we have filled nine to 10 buildings in Pittsman County over the past two and a half years, and frankly, we have run out of marketable product. It's not one thing to have a vacant building, but it's a vacant building with certain height, certain ability for companies to be able to come in, for speed to market, and to have the right infrastructure and be able to attract the right workforce. And at this point in time in Pittsman County, we have a lot of land available, graded land for greenfield space, but not a lot of product or any product, truly. And so with that being the case, Realty Link is our first private entity to come into the county, is from my understanding probably one of the first to ever come into the region in this capacity, and to take the burden off of the city of Danville, off of Pittsman County, off of the taxpayers, and to build, spec buildings and build for suits for tenants. And so I would like to recognize as far as Oliver Podomo with Realty Link, do you mind standing up, Oliver? And Oliver can certainly answer any immediate questions that you may have. Of course, we have Oliver's contact information. I do have as far as copies of the agreement, and of course, as with any agreement, there will be additional minor legal work as directed by Mr. Hunt, but as far as the business terms of the deal, that deal has been satisfied. And we do have as far as actual concepts that the company has given us showing what they prepare to do on the site, if the board would like to see that. So with that, it may not get a lot of fanfare, but I can promise you as far as in economic development, right now, the state has told us that there's only three buildings in the state of Virginia in excess of 300,000 square feet that are marketable, and with Realty Link, we'll be adding number four. And so Realty Link right now is planning a 350,000 square foot facility, and frankly, we're already talking with potential tenants at this time. So any questions, or if anybody would like to see concepts, we just want to make sure we brought that to your attention.
Question from the board.
I'm sure we'll be updated in a future concerns project.
I would like to say thank you for the hospitality. I got to go down to Greenville and meet with these folks, and their intentions of what they would construct and what they're marketing to would fit right in our footprint with what we see as viable in that space already, so we look forward to partnering with you all very much.
Good. Thank you.
Matt, take him over to her, show him where you are.
He's already been. Hurts an opportunity zone.
Thank you very much. We're down to Hearing of Citizens. Each person addressing the board under Hearing of Citizens shall be a resident or landowner of the county, or the registered agent of such resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and district in an audible tone of voice for the record, but unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during Hearing of the Citizens. All remarks should be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the citizens shall last for a maximum 45 minutes. Any person that has signed up to speak during said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the next board meeting. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. We do have five individuals that signed up tonight. The first one is Julian Richardson. Mr. Richardson.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I won't even need three minutes. I just wanted to tell you two simple words that you probably don't hear often, and that's thank you. Thank you for the way that you are handling this misassigned voter thing that come up that nobody knew about, and I want to thank each of you for how you are handling this situation. I do feel a kind of misplaced right now because I don't know what county I am in. I don't know. And as far as the children are concerned, we were told in a meeting last Saturday from the school board superintendent, and every member on the school board voted unanimously that our kids can continue to attend Pittsman County Schools, and for that, I am very happy tonight, and that's why I want to thank each of you, because I do believe if you had not been involved in the situation, we've never got this far, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Appreciate the kind words. Francis Tucker.
It's also regarding the misassigned voter issue that I wanted to address the board about. We are making progress. I am very pleased that you got involved, because again, this would not have been an issue if it was done correctly from the front end. It was not. I appreciate you stepping in and helping. We've got one step done. The children are supposed to be held harmless. I hope that we can see it through so that all the children from those addresses are grandfathered in. I was told that the Board of Elections was going to speak tonight, and I wanted to be here to be a part of that, so that, just to bring some, working together with them so that we have other issues with the land, the properties, the houses. It's all being talked about without having concern over the actual impact on the residents themselves, and that's what I'm concerned about, that we remember these are people's lives we're playing with, talking about misassigned voters, and that disturbs me. So I appreciate anything you can do to continue to help with us, and I know you are, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker. Next on the list is Mr. Robert Pollak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Robert Pollak. I own and operate Hillview Farms in, listed as Danville, Virginia. We have properties in the Chatham-Blairs District and the Tunstall District. I'm here to speak tonight about the issue of the proposed gas pipelines crossing through Pittsman County and across my farm. I've been a fifth generation resident and a farmer. Our business has been here, and we've recently expanded, as I've talked with you before in previous months. My concern is about that the economic reality of gas pipelines are very limited, and only a few people will profit from these endeavors. I'm concerned about the welfare of county residents, the values of our land, for the fear, mere fact that there is no outlet for these proposed gas lines that will be of any benefit to Pittsman County residents for cheaper gas, only that it will be a traverse and transaction that goes through the county. The Williams Pipeline has been in the ground on our farm for more than 65 years. The predicted life of buried gas pipelines is approximately 50 years, so we have a dated infrastructure already on our farm, and they're wanting to take more land to be able to expand loops, but yet they don't even process any of that with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission at this time, but they're asking for land and trying to make agreements on it, even though it's not in the hands of FERC. I contacted the Mountain Valley-Southgate Land Agent who was responsible for their project in our area, and they have proposed an alternative route on our farm. Last November, this past November, they sent that information out as public record. But yet, when I contact the land agent, he has no knowledge of the route proposed that's crossing through my farm and Mr. Bob Haskins' farm that joins us, which consequently is the same route that Williams says that they want on our property. Even though, Mr. Haskins spoke with him a couple weeks before, when I spoke with Mr. Pitts of MVP today, he said, "I vaguely remember talking to him about it, and I told him that I didn't think there would be anything crossing his farm." So there's a lot of misinformation from these companies on how that they will handle business in our area. Lawsuit was filed a couple weeks ago about the MVP transactions that have occurred of environmental damage, and there are 300 cited issues that they have found on environmental issues. So how are we as landowners and caretakers of our property in order to think that they will put the land back exactly as they found it? The answer is, they can't. In conclusion, I know that how business works in making a profit of cutting costs. I encourage you all to come to visit our property and the farm business that we have in operation. These proposals are disrespectful in gesture and nature in how they're handling themselves to me and my neighbors. I pray for daily patience and guidance on the resolution, and encourage you to come visit with us and see the issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Pollak. We're down to, it appears to be Gene Richardson?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Thank you to the board. I'm also here just to say thank you, because I feel without your assistance, maybe things wouldn't have been worked out the way they have. So far, they are looking good, and I'd like to thank Dr. Jones, the school division superintendent, and the board, the school board, for the assistance that they've given us. We well on our way to working things out. Pittsman County will always be my home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Good evening, Chairman and Board and others. I'm also speaking to the, oh, I'm a Pittsman County accountant, accountant. Also, with the misassigned voters issue, we want to thank everyone, and everyone is just grateful that it's being looked into, but there was still, still a case of disrespect and disregard as far as the citizens were concerned, and putting that meeting together on Saturday, which was a good thing, because we were asking for that meeting to be held, but again, the citizens were overlooked as far as what the best time would be to hold the meeting. We, some of us, we had a meeting a few months ago to meet with the citizens, the Blair Civic League, and we asked, we told them the date and time that we wanted to meet, and they told us that it couldn't work because Saturday, Saturday mornings are not good because of their schedules and work and others things. So when we got in touch with the board, with the registrar, we were told on Friday, the 30th, after 5:00, that the meeting had been scheduled for Saturday, the 15th, at 10:00 a.m. Well, immediately on Monday, we wrote back and said, we talked to the citizens, and they said that that is not a good time, and when we tried to meet with them, they told us it was not a good time. We had to make the meeting at, in the evening at a church site, but the, again, we were told that it was just too, it wasn't going to, it wasn't going to be changed, and not very many citizens were able to show up. Now, also, we were told, you know, to Kelly's credit, that if they couldn't meet, that she would meet with them individually and explain things, but that's not understanding common unity as far as community goes, that everyone wants to hear the information together to discuss it and to understand it, and I hope you understand that. We were, we were told that the children would be allowed, as you heard, that the children would be allowed to stay in Pittsman County School District, but nothing was put in writing, and so we would like to have it, or redirect us, we'd like to have it in writing that they're able to stay in the Pittsman County School District, but we don't know if what was said was according to the policy that says that they can continue in the school district for the remainder of the school year. And we just want to know if it's going to be for the remainder of the school year or for the remainder of their school career, which is through 12th grade. So if you could help us with that, and may I please say the last thing, that we want you to get, please get something in place for future, so that we won't have this type of overlooking your role in what's going on with the citizens. Thank you.
That completes the Hearing of the Citizens portion of tonight's meeting. We're down to rezoning, public hearings pursuant to Article 5, Division 6 of the Pittsman County Zoning Ordinance Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors have been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, the Board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of Pittsman County. The Board must ensure that all of its decisions and regulations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and in the best interest of Pittsman County, its citizens, and its prosperity. I will open the public hearing of case number one at 7:26. Mr. Sides.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Case R-18-027, EST Enterprises LLC, and James Hunt have petitioned to rezone 1.944 acres from A1 Agricultural District to R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District, and 0.715 acres from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District, to combine with adjacent parcels, zone R1 and A1 respectively. If you note in your board packet, it's just a swap of property lines, and the zoning has to be changed to accommodate that. The parcels are located on State Road 875, Horseshoe Road, and on State Road 981, Gemstone Lane, in the Westover Election District. Once the properties are rezoned to R1 and A1, then all uses listed under Section 35-222 and 35-178 are permitted. The Planning Commission, with no opposition, recommended granting the petitioner's request. Staff summary is in your board packet, and Mr. Chairman, Mr. Scott Thompson is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Thompson, do you have anything you'd like to add, sir?
No, sir, I'm just here to answer questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. There are no one signed up for this item tonight, so I close the public hearing at 7:28, and entertain your board's pleasure, or if you have questions.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have the board approve case number R-18-027, to rezone 1.944 acres from A1 Agricultural District to R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision, excuse me, District, and also to rezone .715 acre from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Scares, seconded by Mr. Barber. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Mr. Thompson, your property has been rezoned, sir. Thank you. Mr. Sides, I think you have something to add to the property, this next one, before we open the vote.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I want to make the board aware before we open the public hearing that subsequent to the Planning Commission meeting on this particular case, which I'll introduce in a second, we received a request from the property owner for some additional protection. The applicant has since submitted a proffer, which you all received tonight just before the meeting, proffering to provide that buffer, and I think legally, we need to make sure that that's acknowledged before you open the public hearing. Is that correct?
Yes. He's allowed to submit a proffer if it's in writing prior to the opening of the public hearing. He has done that, so that proffer will be part of the record and should be considered by the board when they make their decision tonight.
And I will reference and go over the proffer as we get into the case.
All right. Having taken care of all the business that was necessary prior to the opening of the public hearing, I'll open the public hearing at 7:30. Mr. Sides.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, case R-18-028, Gerald Roach has petitioned to rezone 0.71 acre located on US Highway 58 West, Martinsville Highway, excuse me, in the Tunstall Election District, from RC1 Residential Combined Subdivision District to B2 Business District General for... for sale, service, and repair of vehicles, a used car lot. Once the property is rezoned to B2, then all uses listed under Section 35-365 are permitted. The planning commission with no opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request. As I stated previously, subsequent to that meeting, the property owner, adjacent property owner, sent a letter to our office, Community Development, raising some concerns relating to buffering of the property and the fact that it would be a business use, did not express opposition to the project, but just wanted to be buffered and protected. So the applicant submitted a proffer, which has been duly notarized, saying that they voluntarily proffer to address any erosion and sound control issues and to replant a tree buffer along the neighboring property on the western side. So that has been entered into the record. Staff summary for the case is in your board packet, and Mr. Chairman, Mr. Roach and Mr. Scotty Sparks are here to represent the petition.
Mr. Roach, Mr. Sparks, do you have anything you'd like to add, sir?
No, sir.
Okay. Little question from the board. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 7:32 and entertain the board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, case R-828, they'd like to make a motion to rezone it as part of RC1 to B2. I'd like to point that's consistent with the area I'm very familiar with.
Motion made by Mr. Barber. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Miller. Further discussion on the motion?
Let's just make sure we note the motion that includes the proffer.
Okay, sub noted. All right. Please cast your votes. Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Roach, your property has been rezoned, sir. Thank you. We're down to case number three, public hearing, rezoning case R18-029. I'll open the public hearing at 7:33. Mr. Sides?
Yes, in case R-18-029, Russell Eads has petitioned to rezone 3.821 acres, part of a 26.61 acre tract located on State Road 633, Clover Road, in the Stanton River Election District, from A1 Agricultural District to R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to combine with adjacent parcels of land already zoned R1. Once the property is rezoned to R1, then all uses listed under Section 35-222 are permitted. The planning commission with no opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request. Staff summary is enclosed in the board packet, and Mr. Chairman, Mr. Russell Eads is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Eads, do you have anything you'd like to add, sir?
Nothing at all.
Thank you, Mr. Eads. Does the board have any questions? Now I'll close the public hearing at 7:34 and entertain the board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, in case R-18-029, a move that we rezone from R1 to A1, I'm sorry, from A1 to R1, 3.821 acres located on State Road 633, Clover Road, in Stanton River Election District, it is consistent with a comprehensive plan.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Farmer. Is there further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. Please cast your votes. Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Eads' property has been rezoned, sir. Thank you. We're down to case number four, public hearing, rezoning case number R18-030. Mr. Sides?
In case R-18-030, Charles Thornton has petitioned to rezone 4.60 acres located on State Road 626, Musville Road, in the Callens Gritten Election District, from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to combine with the adjacent parcels of land zoned A1, which are already part of a family farm. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted use. The planning commission with no opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request. Staff summary is enclosed in your board packet, and Mr. Chairman, Mr. Thornton is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Thornton, do you have anything you'd like to add, sir?
No, sir. That goes.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. Board got any questions? Mr. Thornton, I don't see any. I'll close the public hearing at 7:36 and entertain the board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion for case R-18-030, that 4.6 acres be rezoned from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Farmer, seconded by Mr. Blackstock. Is there further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Thornton, your property has been rezoned, sir. We're down to other public hearings. Each person addressing the board under a public hearing shall step up, give his or her name and district in or his or her place of residency for non-county citizens in an audible tone of voice for the record. And unless further, the time is granted by the chairman, she'll limit his or her address to three minutes. Speakers for a group, she'll be limited to 10 minutes. Speakers, she'll conclude their remarks at that time unless the consent of the board is affirmatively given to extend the speaker's allotted time. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Item one is public hearing, PCC 41-5, noise ordinance. Mr. Hunt?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This issue was discussed at the work session and previous legislative committee meeting. On a request for Brian Haskins, Commonwealth's Attorney, the public hearing tonight is to potentially revise Pennsylvania County Code, Section 45-5B, to replace an incorrect code reference in there, 40-60, to Section 41-6, thereby referencing the proper maximum sound pressure level chart that Mr. Haskins needs to successfully potentially prosecute future noise ordinance violations.
Okay. We'll play.
We have to open the public.
Open the public hearing, I'm sorry. No one signed up, so I close the public hearing at 7:39. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the revision to Pennsylvania County Code, 41-5B, as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Dr. Miller. Is there any discussion on the motion? Please cast your votes. Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. We're down to public hearing, residents additional treatment group home. I'll open the public hearing at 7:39, and Mr. Sides?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The planning commission received a request for a residential addiction treatment group home, and we did not have such a use designated in our current Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance. So the planning commission in November held a public hearing, and they proposed a definition for a residential addiction treatment group home to be a special use. The definition would be residential homes for the treatment of recovering drug and alcohol addictions. So the proposed definition has been duly advertised. It is in your board packet, both the definition, residential group homes for the treatment of recovery, drug, and alcohol addictions, and it notes that these would be allowed only as a special use in the A1 Agricultural District, the R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District, and the RC1 Residential Combined Subdivision District. And I point out in your executive summary that if such a use were to come before the planning commission, in addition to any rezoning, it would require a special use permit, which would be a public hearing before the planning commission and a public hearing before the board of zoning appeals. So there would be numerous opportunities for the public to comment on such a proposal.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion. Hold it just one second. No one signed up, so I'll close the public hearing at 7:41, and Dr. Miller?
I'll make that motion.
Second? Motion made by Dr. Miller, seconded by Mr. Davis. Do I have discussion on the motion?
Made.
Yes, we need to read that motion. That's on page 131. Can you read that, Dr. Miller, please?
Yes, sir. I make a motion to approve the proposed amend, wait a minute, is this it?
Yes.
That's it.
Okay, yeah. I make a motion to approve the proposed amendments to PCC Chapter 35 as advertised, allowing a residential addiction treatment group home as a special use in the A1, R1, and RC1 zoning districts.
Second.
Mr. Davis, I'll just second.
Okay.
That's all you've got. We're on with that.
I'm just trying to move a meeting along.
I hear you, I hear you. I appreciate that. Thanks for catching that you didn't read the motion. Please cast your votes. Please record the vote. Motion carries six to one. We're down to public hearing, indigenous elderly tax exemption revision, and I'll open that public hearing at 7:42.
I can take this and play what's going on in public. We discussed in our previous legislative committee meeting and at today's work session, which I encourage the audience to attend, the legislative committee unanimously recommended to the full board to hold a public hearing tonight to potentially revise Section 6-6 of the Pennsylvania County Code, which would raise the current elderly indigent real estate tax exemption annual income threshold from $18,000 to $25,000 and raise the total exemption cap from $300 to $450. This will enable citizens of the county, more citizens of the county, to take advantage of this tax exemption and protect the less portion of the county. We just ask you hold a public hearing and then vote how you determine this.
No one signed up to speak at this either, so I'll close the public hearing at 7:43 and entertain the board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Farmer.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the revisions to PCC Section 6-6 as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Farmer, seconded by Mr. Barber. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I'd just like to say something.
Mr. Black?
I think this is a piece of legislation that we pass in here tonight that's very important. It only takes us a few minutes to pass it. With people with income levels below $25,000 in a household, this is a big deal for them to, and to raise the limit. We're helping the most needy in our communities, and these are the people that we need to be thinking about when we raise taxes. And many of us are blessed with good jobs or resources to pay for these things, but we have a lot of people, our neighbors, that struggle every day, and this will help those people, and I'm proud to be a part of this.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Anyone else? I would echo the same sentiments. The one thing, let's try and, I believe, too, in the legislative committee throughout their research, found out this was consistent with other areas surrounding our county with these numbers. And so I too am honored to support this. Please record your votes. Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Any unfinished business?
Yes, sir.
Okay. New business, DSS memorandum of understanding, Ms. Vanderheide.
Good evening. I'm going to discuss with you the DSS memorandum of understanding. If you'll remember, the county's been working in conjunction with the Department of Social Services Board for quite a few months now to corroborate together to gain financial functions into the county, to help them kind of streamline that process, and we would be taking payroll and purchasing into our departments. This would be something that we would work with them, and we already have had a meeting with them, with their staff, to get that lined up, and also to provide a grievance procedure to allow the DSS personnel to have a third party that could help them if they had issues, payroll or personnel-type issues that they need to discuss with somebody other than somebody at the DSS offices. So we have worked with Mr. Hunt in putting together a memorandum of understanding, which was attached in your board packet tonight. And basically, what it says is that effective January 1, the DSS shall fully and completely follow and be bound by all aspects of the county's procurement policy, including the small purchase credit card program, as well as to fully and completely follow and be bound by the county's grievance policy contained in the county's personnel plan. Payroll would be followed up by July 1 of this coming year, July 2019, and we're doing that to allow for ample time for all the payroll figures and all of their history to be rolled into the county's payroll system. And like I said, we would be working with their staff fully because we need their expertise as far as DSS procedures are concerned. This document will need to go before the DSS board. It does say that it has been previously approved. We had thought that was going to be done at their December meeting, but we will make sure that that is taken to them in January. So of course, if they don't approve it, then it probably would need to be brought back to you. But we just wanted to get our piece of it underway, and if there are any problems or what have you, we'll be bringing it back to you all.
Okay. Questions from Ms. Vanderheide.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve the attached DSS among you as presented.
Okay. Second?
Motion made by Dr. Miller, seconded by Mr. Scares. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, please cast your votes. Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Transfer of unused local grant funds for fire and rescue purchases. Ms. Vanderheide?
Yes.
It's your show, go ahead.
Yes, during Hurricane Michael, it was found that the county's special operations team was not adequately equipped to handle all the medical emergencies that arose during that time, and they also had to make some major equipment repairs and unexpected repairs to rescue one vehicle. So a total of $10,000 is needed to make the necessary repairs to that vehicle as well as to provide the necessary equipment so that we'll be prepared in the future for events such as this one. And so in looking at our grants fund, there has been some funds of local monies that have been in the grants fund for some time that can be utilized for this purpose. And what I've done is categorized those different grants into categories, whether it be for sheriff's office, fire and rescue. So these are actually local funds that would have been put over, and now those particular grants have since ceased, and it's just monies that are available that would typically come back to your general fund. So we're just requesting the use of $10,000 of the fire and rescue type grant funds. And like I said, these are local funds that have just not, just laid in the grants fund to be appropriated back to the Fire and Rescue 2019 budget for these repairs and for the equipments that, the equipment that is needed.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve a transfer of $10,000 from the grants fund and appropriate this amount to the Fire and Rescue FY19 budget to be used for the purchase of SOT safety equipment. of SOT safety equipment and tools and for repairs to the rescue one vehicle.
Motion made, Mr. Blackstock. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Scares. Any discussion? Just any one question? Mr. Walker?
Yes, sir.
Is he okay with that email?
He is. He's the one that asked me for that email. So he sent an email to me to let me know that's what they needed.
Was away.
Maybe for Mr. Hicks, Kim, you may know. This vehicle is the vehicle that we authorized the purchaser of a couple of years ago, was a used vehicle. But we've had a pretty extensive, if memory serves me correct, of repairs on this vehicle since purchase. And I certainly support doing this and helping fire and rescue, but I think we ought to put it in the back of our minds that we keep putting money, more and more money into this vehicle, we might want to be thinking down the road of other options. I'm just saying, that are the needs they might have.
If I may, Mr. Chairman? In fact, we've had recent mechanical problems with it on two different occasions in the last six or eight weeks. And I will follow up with accounting of what those issues were and how much they cost in a weekly correspondence to see if you know what's going on there.
Okay. I just remember that being a reoccurring thing. It'd be nice if you could actually look back to purchase date and see what the repair records have been, so we know where we're at.
Sure.
Thank you. Be good information for the board to have. Thank you. All right, please cast your votes. Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Award of Shell Building Design Build RFP and appropriation of grant funds. Ms. Vanderheide?
Yes. The county's purchasing department issued an RFP for A&E services for the design, contracting services, and contract administration for the construction of a 30,000 square foot building. And that's in the Kane Creek Center. It will be right on 58, where you can see that from the highway. It will be a great addition there. The total cost of the A&E services is $128,200. We actually went through the process. There were four proposals that we received. We narrowed that down to two, and they were evaluated by a team, and they made presentations. And the top firm was Dewberry at the 128-200. And the county has been fortunate enough to receive Southside Economic Development Grant from the Tobacco Commission in the amount of $1.5 million. This is actually going to be a design build type build, construction that we've never done before, so it'll be new territory for us. So Mr. Sides and I have been on a call with Tobacco Commission personnel to know how exactly that will work. But basically, our A&E firm will put specs together and put it out for bid for a construction company to not only build the facility, but they'll also provide the 50% match. And so we wouldn't have much, if any, local monies in this project at all. So we're looking at roughly a $3 million project. So tonight, what we're asking for is for you all to approve the appropriation of the $1.5 million grant from the Tobacco Commission and to award the A&E services for this project to Dewberry in the amount of $128,200. And any funds that we would need to cover local portions of this would actually come from our economic development fund. So it wouldn't be any new funds that would need to go into this project.
Already budgeted.
Already budgeted in the economic... We would just move monies down into that project if need be.
Okay. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to award the above referenced proposal to Dewberry as presented and appropriate a total of $1,000,000, well, $1,500,000 of grant funds for this project.
I have a second.
Second?
Motion made by Mr. Davis, seconded by Mr. Scares. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is the 128 coming out of the 1.5 tobacco?
Well, there are some monies that are actually budgeted in the grant for A&E. And so probably on the front end, in this way, all the tobacco grants work, we actually front the monies and then we draw monies down. So it's a possibility that we could get 50% of those funds from grant money. That's why there may be a possibility that we would have to use some of our economic development funds, but on the back end, we can probably negotiate with the builder to try to recoup that money.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I'd like to, at the next board meeting, I want to see the balance that we have, what we've spent out of the economic development fund, and where we stand with that and the balance in it.
Okay.
Any other discussion? So ultimately, if I heard you correctly, there's a good possibility of the $3 million project, we may have to front the 128, too, but we would get potentially half of it back from Tobacco and half of it back from builder.
If we can negotiate that, yeah.
Okay, all right. Please cast your vote. Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Vanderheide. We're down to 13A appointments. Mr. Farmer?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Joe Rogers to the PCSA for a four-year term, starting on January 1 of 2019.
Second?
Motion made by Mr. Farmer, seconded by Mr. Blackstock. Any discussion on the motion? Please tally the vote. Motion carries unanimously. We're down to matters from work session. Item one from work session was structure.
I do. Mr. Chairman, based on the discussion during the work session, I make a motion to direct staff to develop a matrix on dilapidated structures and to also create a line item for funding of said items in the upcoming year's budget and bring back to the full board for review.
Grab a second.
Second?
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Davis. Is there further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I want to make sure that it's clear, it's for the upcoming year's budget. We wouldn't change the current year's budget.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Please cast your vote. Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. We're down to board reports. This month, we'll start off with Dr. Miller.
None today, sir.
I have none.
Mr. Blackstock?
Just like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I think we live in the best county in Virginia, and I'm happy to be a part of this board.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Mr. Farmer?
Sir, I'd just like to say that tonight concludes, you know, my first year of being a member of the board supervisors, and just want to thank staff and all my fellow supervisors that have helped me get up to speed and feel confident. I also like to thank the citizens. During these 12 months, I've had numerous occasions of getting involved and listening and helping and just being an advocate everything I can for my district. Just want to thank those for allowing me to continue to learn. And like Mr. Blackstock said, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to everyone, and we're looking forward to 2019.
Thank you. Mr. Farmer?
I'd like to, as I said, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, a safe one. And we got honored at Tostal, being Misses decide heaven, I was kind of like, I was around the county myself, kind of, it was kind of ironic, but anyway, I hope everybody has a great Christmas.
Thank you. Mr. Scares?
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, especially the staff. I truly appreciate the hard work and all the, I've seen lots of improvements throughout the county, and I appreciate all that work. Thank you.
Okay. I would echo the same sentiments. It's a very special time of the year, and I would ask that our citizens remember the reason for the season. And I also want to thank the Richardson family and the others that came to lay and spoke about the voter issue. We're happy that we were able to assist in any way possible. We certainly don't ever want anybody to not have all their voting privileges that they have. And trust me, regardless of where a line particularly exists, you are part of the Pennsylvania County path and always will be, so, and we're happy to have you. I would also just like to remind the citizens that we do the work session at 4:30 every evening before this meeting. And I know we come in a lot of times and it seems like we take an item and we go through it pretty quickly. Trust me, there was a lot of detail spent between 4:30 and about 6:30, 6:15, 6:20 of discussions on these items tonight. In particular, Ms. Bayless did make a presentation at 4:30 for all of that, so, on the work session, which gives us an opportunity to really interact with her and staff. So, you know, I feel like that's moving in a positive manner, and we will stay on top of that as it does go forward, too. And again, I would echo the sentiments to everyone on the board that said it tonight. We wish a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all of the staff. I personally believe that we have the greatest staff from serving any municipality in the state. So I'm very, very happy to have an opportunity to work with each and every one of them, and I've said it multiple times over the last two years, I'm very happy to serve with these gentlemen that are on this board. And again, hope you have a great holiday and a safe holiday. And I'll turn it over to our county administrator, Mr. Smithman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of comments. First, I want to, I don't want us to not properly emphasize what took place today with the IDA. And I'm going to use that to talk about how we are doing things differently in economic development than not only have we ever done before, but that I've ever seen a county so aggressively work to partner with the private sector to make economic development happen. We are, first of all, the matter with Realty Link, to have them coming into our community, actively investing as outsiders with their own money, without any of our money, and buying at market value land to make this happen is commendable for Mr. Rowe and celebratory, I think, for this board of supervisors. Same goes for the shell building that we will be building at the corner of Kane Creek and Highway 58. Any other time a government, including this government, builds a shell building, we're the ones coming up with the $1.5 million. So to think that we've gone out and we're actively courting the private sector developers to pick up that piece and to go in partnership with us to build speculatory space in our inventory is commendable. And the third item is, and this is, I know we're the first public sector client of this firm, and I know that this is very unusual, especially for counties our size, much less a, an area such as in RICO or Fairfax, is partnering with real estate, a national, an international real estate firm to help bring traffic to this area. That agreement with Marcus and Milichap has been going on for about six or eight months now. It is showing tremendous dividends that you know about and that this community will hear about over the next six or so months. So I'm just super proud of what Matt's doing and congratulate this board for letting us work in some uncharted territory that is paying off big time in our economic development shop. And it's not just paying off in the south end of the county, it's paying off in the middle, it's paying off in the north. And there will be major announcements in all of our county areas over the next 12 months because of these partnerships. I also wanted to address the pet center fine issue that was in today's paper. It's a frustrating conversation. A fine has not been levied. We were noticed that we could receive a fine. We adamantly deny the allegations in the assertion by the state vet's office that some things happened. These issues go back to September 2017, I believe. Protocols are in place. We've worked with our state vet, with our local vet of record. Work at the pet center is going better than ever, and we had an issue that was brought about by a former volunteer that turned out to be pretty groundless in many ways. And we adamantly deny the charges of the state, and it made available on our Facebook page and website, the county's complete response, as well as the initial notice of violation by the state. And we hope to receive a favorable determination on that issue any day now, I hope. Finally, well, next to finally, and all of you have said a lot about our staff tonight, I'll tell you, and we are pinching ourselves in the office right now with the number of strong hires we have added to our team. Our new pet center manager, we couldn't be more thrilled with. Our new HR director, we've just hired a project manager for economic development. We're getting ready to any day now hire a replacement for Mr. Slim's old position. All of these folks are just top-notch individuals. And our team, as I'd put it up, as I think it was Mr. Warren said, or whoever said, against anyone. And we have a very, very lean staff, but we have a very, very capable staff. And that goes from the guys that drive the garbage collection trucks and their foreman, Mr. Mike Waller, who I appreciate tremendously these days, all the way up to the folks on the executive team. So I couldn't be prouder to work with these folks. 2018 was a very difficult year for this county in many, many, many ways. And this board of supervisors took giant steps in turning this train and putting it on the right course. And I truly believe that 2019, the hard work we did in 2019 is going to pay great dividends in 2019. And I look forward to being part of it with each of you gentlemen. I hope everyone has a happy holiday season. Thank you.
Mr. Hunt, do you have anything, sir?
I just want to echo everybody's sentiments about have a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I also want to say, this past year's been one of the most fulfilling, personally for me, from a work standpoint. I think we accomplished great things in 2018. I enjoyed working here, and I think we have laid the foundation for very successful 2019 through tough decisions this year. I enjoy working with each one of you. I think we have a good relationship, and I look forward to 2019 and remember the reason for the season.
Thank you. We have one other thing, and I'll ask the board to lead that down front. We have a person that's a member of our team that does a ton of work behind the scenes and gets everything ready for our meetings and our agendas and keeps all of our minutes straight and really keeps us informed throughout the year and is constantly working for us. And we could not do it without her, and we appreciate her so much. And we have a small Christmas gift for our clerk, Ms. Caitlin McCluster. Please come forward. Mr. Moore got that gift card from Conny.
I'll just say that when I stepped in this position back in the spring, oh, boy, it was fun. Everything was new, we were transitioning. Y'all have worked with me, I appreciate that. IT has worked with me, David and Vaden and Greg, and I mean, everybody I can't imagine a better group to work with and be patient. And I can come to anybody when I have questions, and I think everybody feels that way. We are a team, and I do enjoy working with each one of y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McCluster? That concludes all business before the board tonight. I'll plan to leave the chair.